We'll now move on to discussion items 16 and 17, which will be heard concurrently. Item 16 is purchase of a twin-engine helicopter, new water tenders, a comprehensive review of fire safety in the County of San Diego, and waiver of board policy A72. And item 17 is enhancing clearing and brush management efforts to reduce wildfire risk in the County of San Diego and waive board policy A72. First, we'll hear from public comment, and then after that I'll have Supervisor Desmond discuss the two items, because those are his items, and then we'll have a board discussion. Andrew, please call the public speakers.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 20 requests to speak on this item, 10 in person and 10 requesting to speak by phone. Also note that we received eight ecomments, seven in favor, and one in opposition. Any individuals that requested to speak on items 16 and 17 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers, starting with those in favor of these items. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. We'll be calling you in groups of three, so I'll ask you to please listen for your name. You'll have two minutes to address the board, and I apologize, because there are 20 or more speakers on this item, we'll have one minute to address the board on these two items. Please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'd like to invite Ford, Mary Davis, Pam, and Joe Napier. If I've called your name, please go forward.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair and Board. Joe Napier, I'm the Fire Chief of the Valley Center Fire Protection District, your Department of the Quality of Life in the Back Country. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the initiative to purchase a new helicopter, water tenders, and anything that we can do to help save lives and property and the risk of wildfire in our 85 square miles and beyond. Helicopters, modern helicopters, modern two-engine helicopters are amazing pieces of equipment. They have the ability to carry a lot of water, they have the ability to protect property, they have the ability to shape a fire that's out of control, but more importantly, they have the ability to save lives. And the way that they save lives is when people get little to no warning to evacuate, those helicopters can go in there, and then they can put fire out on roadside and evacuation routes. When firefighters get trapped, they can save lives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite, that was one minute. I'd like to invite three additional speakers. In favor, Rick Lopez, Nate Wallman. If I've called your name, please go forward.
Good afternoon. The Sheriff would like to recognize the Board of Supervisors and County of San Diego's commitment to investing in disaster and fire response and preparedness effort.
Can you please state your name?
I'm sorry. On behalf of Sheriff Kellin Martinez, I'm Commander Rick Lopez of the San Diego Sheriff's Office. And as leaders in our profession, we naturally reflect on the unpredictability of fire threats, which causes us to continually evaluate our current resources and preparedness strategy. A firefighting helicopter enhances our rapid response capabilities. When a fire ignites, time is of the essence, therefore with the ability to quickly transport personnel and equipment to remote or hard-to-reach areas, a helicopter can deliver immediate firefighting support, increasing our chances of containment before a small fire becomes a catastrophic blaze. By investing in an additional firefighting aircraft that will serve the entire region, the Board is investing in a more robust San Diego fleet, which builds upon a unified approach to fire management and sharing of resources to ensure no community is left vulnerable. In collaboration with CAL FIRE, we are also exploring our mutual staffing resources and capabilities to operate nighttime flying water drop operations. It is for all these reasons that the Sheriff strongly supports Supervisors.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Ford, the next speaker's coming forward. I'd like to invite speakers in opposition, Robert Gurman, Alan C., and allegedly Audra.
Hello. Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Nate Wallman. I am Vice President of SEIU Local 221, representing over 11,000 county employees, also a former employee of 15 years. We are grateful and supportive of Supervisor Desmond's proposal that responds to recent fires and prepares for future fires that we'll inevitably face. As you all may know, there were county employees who have been impacted by these fires as well, and we're continuing to collect data on this impact. As such, we would suggest and ask that this item include a provision for county employees who have been impacted to be provided a retroactive emergency leave. This would help mitigate the impact the fires had, including a challenge of having to miss work to ensure their homes and families were protected. We believe it's important to consider the county's employees and their selfless public service, and ensure that they're also taken care of in the face of these disasters. This is an important step, encouraging more people to provide essential public services as we face future challenges. Again, we thank Supervisor Desmond for bringing this forward, and we look forward to working with the county on this and other issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Alan C. The border fire, 0% containing first over 24, took them over 24 before they started making percentages. I believe right now, we're at 55%. They can correct me if they're wrong. I saw something amazing during the fires up north. A helo pilot, when he dive bombed in, working to collect it and cycle it to get that helo just in power, knocked that little spot of fire out, saved four homes, bam, right on the spot. Yes, helos do work, but helos don't work if they take two bloody years to certify a night vision pilot. That is absolutely asinine. We've got a whole fleet of naval pilots, retired or active, can take over the duties. We need the helos in here now. We're going to put the money in this new helo. There better be a damn well a pilot certified within two months, not two frickin' years. That is so stupid. Helos are your number one defense, along with the scoopers from Canada. Get that water on there right away. I seen a bunch of firefighters north of, they're doing the job, but we need them helos.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Robert Gurman, Citizens Against Gillespie's Expansion. We oppose item 16, the purchase of the helicopter. San Diego has enough firefighting equipment, air equipment. Those at CAL FIRE at Ramona with helicopters and fixed wing tankers. Ramona is equipped with fire retardant and water loaning capability. Sheriffs have eight helicopters, all purpose for firefighting and rescue duties. The military helos at Miramar are certified for firefighting. We have in California, the only for-profit, investor-owned, public utility company has five firefighting helicopters, San Diego Gas and Electric. Helicopters add pollution to the bad air quality associated with fires. Helicopters are the most expensive to purchase, operate, and maintain costs, including fuel. County budget restraint should be considered when we think about this purchase. We have enough helicopters to support the purchase, attenders, hydro hydrants, helo pads, and firefighters, boots on the ground. If you approve this, please put the helicopter in Ramona. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call for the last speaker in person, Mark. Final call for allegedly Audra, and Mary Davis, and Pam. Not seeing any movement in the chamber. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone, and we will begin with our first caller.
I kind of agree with that guy about the let the Marines do it. Call the orange man, and have him just cut the red tape, and we get 20 Marine fire choppers without the fire. And all the orange man, man, he can do the firefighters, he can get the choppers, whatever it takes, man. Come on, man. This is a San Diego native, a gal with a Marine. Just cut the bullshit, man. We could give them money, give them money, you're going to do those guys, the firefighters that work here now. I live up on top of where that fire in Mission Valley was, and there was like 40 fire trucks, man. They did a great job. Only one, the three guys didn't lose their house, but it was, fire got in and they put it out. It was really a good thing, man. They did a great job. Give them the money. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Just to be clear, Gunswallow, hi. Just to be clear, it's combining 16 and 17, correct, Andrew?
You have one minute to address the board, yes.
Yes, it's 16 and 17? Correct, okay. So, okay, so pretty much, let's see. Oh, that's a lot of money. And, yeah. Let's see. Pretty much, I'll, okay, so I'm going to combine this, I'm going to read off of some pretty good notes that I'm going to, oh shit, it's only 60 seconds, I'm just like wasting my time. Okay, you know what? This is lame. More waste of money for things that are being orchestrated on our dime, the people remain blind, and clueless, and gullible. Yeah, that's all I got.
Thank you. Well, now I hear from the next caller. Please go ahead.
I applaud Supervisor Desmond's approach for a comprehensive solution for our county. It should be noted, however, that many of the parcels needing additional brush clearance are owned by residents who are physically or financially unable to maintain the defensible space necessary to reduce their wildfire risk. Because we know that communities are only as safe as our least safe parcel, it is important that the plan include a manner to address these fire risk properties continuously. I urge approval for this comprehensive plan, but I echo the concerns of the back country counterparts, that this plan can only be fully effective and equitable if all relevant community groups are included in the planning and the funding. In the back country, the only solution for some residents has been the support of volunteer organizations, such as our Fire Safe Council.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Hello. As you said, the threat of wildfires now year-round, driven by things like EVs and BES and environmentalists focusing on decarbonization or even things that are actually toxic or burn real well, like renowned gas producers like plastics, and things like Santa Ana winds whipping and wildfires, they've been around for ages. They're not climate change. BES and EVs have too many risks. Pretty much all batteries are flammable to some degree, like, and it's gasoline or hydrogen. What makes lithium ion batteries dangerous is their ability to combust spontaneously in a relatively low temperature, about 248 degrees, unlike gasoline at 495 degrees. And also, there's difficulty in putting it.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Hi, this is Dory in Valley Center. Air support is a critical and commonsensical, modern approach to fighting fires. There should be plenty of helicopter pilots that would run or retire from the military, and could depart and have a civilian lifestyle in San Diego flying our helicopters. I can't even imagine seeing a news article about a fire in San Diego that we failed to employ or purchase additional fire support, air support, to fight fires in our community. It just seems like a commonsensical approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, now hear from the next caller.
Justin here, how you guys doing? Did you know that the County of San, when we built the room for the new Regis Fire Boarder, we bought a projector and a lens? I bet you to this day, we have never used those lens, that lens, or that, I would be surprised if we used a projector. This cost an ungoddy amount of money, and the people working at the Regis Fire Boarder says we have no use of this ungoddy expensive projector. But our supervisors knew what is best for us, so we decided to waste that money, for whatever reason. We can go ahead and do it. Here's the thing, you guys aren't preventing fires, you're just cleaning up afterwards. It's not that hard. 2003, we said, hey, look, we need to clean up the sides of the road.
Thank you. Now hear from the final caller.
I'm William E. Simpson, announce the prevention is worth the pound of cure. Failure in prevention leads to more wildfire suppression. I'm the Executive Director of Wild Horse Fire Brigade. Goats are ecologically inappropriate in areas where native flora and fauna are subject to potential erosion and loss of plant life or other existing animals. They're ruminants, and they digest the seeds of plants and grasses, so it's not good. Horses, on the other hand, are suited to rugged landscapes, where smaller, herbivores would be subject to predation by krugers, wild dogs, and coyotes, and they graze in an area and reseed because of their digestive system, which passes most seeds that germinate. Wild horses are available to the county from the BLM under the Humane Transfer of Excess Animals Act, at very little cost. American wild horses also offer tourism opportunities for the county, which makes wild, the grass and brush suppression cost positive, so you'd actually make money.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
I was scheduled to speak, but I didn't get your answer.
Andrew, did you call Mark Speaker's slip?
Mark, I called you twice.
Okay. So the time, yeah, you were called, so the time has passed, but you can definitely be able to speak whenever you're present in the chamber and your slip is called. Thank you. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Appreciate it. And first and foremost, I want to thank our incredible firefighters and first responders. You've done a fantastic job. We have several fire chiefs here today, sheriffs, representatives, all of you people that run to fires, while the rest of us run away. You run to them, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate all your heroic actions. In the last week or so, we have like a dozen fires pop up, you know, on, I don't know, the new app I got, but they're popping up everywhere, and they're out. It's like, okay, this one got two acres, this one got five acres, whatever. You're doing a fantastic, some of them got bigger, but you're doing a fantastic job in suppressing those fires, and luckily, we haven't had the winds, you know, that have been that egregious, like they had in LA. Some of the questions I've been asked lately is, you know, from San Diego residents, is, you know, could this happen here? Could this, what happened in LA, happen here? Are our reservoirs and our fire hydrants full? Is our brush cleared? Do we have the resources necessary to combat a major fire? So those reasons are why I really brought this item forward, and here, I'm just going to do a short little segue. I do agree with the SEIU person who got up and said, I think disaster relief for our employees, I think that's something we could or should explore. That's all I'll say on that, and it's not part of today's agenda, but that's there. But item 16, basically with this, there's two parts to item 16. First is buying resources, or buying a helicopter and a couple of tenders, water tenders. And then the second part is convening agencies and representatives to come and talk to us and speak with us, and tell us, give us input on their expertise. So first of all, the buying of a new twin-engine helicopter for county fire. This is, we already have like 3.75 million in grant funds from the US Department of Forest Service for the purchase of a twin-engine helicopter. And I think it only makes sense, even though we heard, you know, the current helicopter that the sheriffs are operating, you know, if that's down, and it's not working, or it's in for maintenance, having another helicopter is like insurance. So having two of these helicopters, I think, is a good idea. And so, we've already got the grant funding for the, some grant funding for that helicopter. The second part of this is to add, is to buy a couple of water tenders. I mean, everybody talks about fire hydrants and things like that, but in the incorporated area, there's not a lot of fire hydrants out there. You know, they're in the communities, but they're not out in the areas where a lot of fires start or happen. So the first part of the item here is to buy the helicopter and two of these water tenders. The second part is mostly item 6 here in the, in this item, was to bring stakeholders to come and talk to us. San Diego County Water Authority, and it's under 6A and B, those are both water supply hydrant systems and assessments and reservoir management, things like that. It'd be nice if we could have the Water Authority come in and talk to us. And I'm not thinking they all have to come into one meeting. If we can get them in, you know, sporadically over the next six months, that'd be great. So they could tell us about what our water reliability is, the reservoir management, things like that. In-house, and I think SDGNE could speak to 6C and D, either, you know, county staff could come in, and it'd be nice to have SDGNE come in and talk to us. I have residents that call me and say, hey, I'm nowhere near these fires, why are you shutting off my electricity? So I think that just to have them come in and explain some of their methodology, and make that public information, I think is a good first step as to why things are happening. And so, and then on 6E, I'd love to have the Insurance Commissioner, or somebody from the Insurance Commissioner's office, come and talk to us and say, how do we get here? And how do we get out of this effort with the insurance problem that we seem to have? So that's item 16, and I'll, I don't know, you're taking these together, but I have a kind of a change in item 16 on the motion itself, that, you know, and I understand the sheriffs are operating one of the helicopters already, and I think that's great, but I did talk to the sheriff herself a couple days ago, and she says, you know, it's going to take, she said, it's going to take several years, maybe up to four or five years, to get pilots and crews up to speed, and to be qualified and certified on any new helicopter. And so that's kind of what's taking a little bit longer, so then I reached out to Chief Meacham and said, how quickly can you get pilots into a helicopter? And you said, you could get them fairly quickly, you've already got pilots trained, and you've got a bigger pool, I guess, to draw from. So I would make a motion to approve item 16 with the change of that we purchase a twin-engine helicopter for San Diego County Fire for 24/7 firefighting, to complement the sheriff's helicopter. So I'm not trying to be competing or anything like that, but they own and operate one, you own and operate one, and we own it, I guess. We own both of them? Who's got the pink slip? You do? Okay, we do? All right. So, but different agencies are operating them, and then if we can collaborate, you know, if helicopters are down, or have collaborative efforts, but I think it'd be better to have one agency with one another, and then we got a better possibility of having pilots, and a better possibility of fighting these fires at night. So that would be my motion for 16. 17, this is more about proactive steps for clearing the fuel in the underbrush that's out there. If, as I was watching the Palisades fire, you know, all the fuel was up on top of the hill, and the wind was just blowing it right into the neighborhood there. If there's a way that we can, you know, go and look into better fuel management practices... If there's a way that we can, you know, go in, look into better fuel management practices, we had plenty of goat jokes in my office in the last week, but the, you know, goats and sheep are other animals that can graze, and what I'm told about them is they just, they don't eat the roots, so these things come back, or these plants can come back, so maybe the environmental groups would, you know, may not be as upset. But we should be looking at places within the county where, we've got a lot of houses right up against brush, right up against open fields full of fuel. And if there's ways we can do fire lanes, or put a 200-foot break, or whatever the professionals come up with, is what, what kind of breaks we should have, and maybe what type of clearing, I'm not saying we just mow down everything, but maybe we remove a third of the brush, or a half of it, or whatever, whatever people come up with, is to some sort of brush management so that we can, you know, be prepared, and maybe the fires aren't as bad as they are. 100 mile an hour winds and embers are just games, games off of that. But if we can reduce the fuel, particularly right up next to housing, I think, you know, and make that the first priorities, is where do we, where do we have that, and it's probably too many areas than we want to know about, but doing that type of clearing and then having potentially innovative ideas for, for, you know, animals grazing or things like that to clear the brush. I had notes here that, I think it was in 2019, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency to allow for clearing near homes, which otherwise might be prohibited by CEQA. So it'd be nice if we had a potential, a reach out or an ask to the governor if we can, I don't even know if that's in my board ad, but it just may be staff direction, to say, hey, is it possible for a state of emergency or support a state of emergency if the governor were to come out for that, so we could do that type of clearing. So the first part of my 17 is about, about clearing on land that we don't own. These are for homeowners or landowners, and potentially working with them to clear their land. And as I think it was a caller mentioned, that if somebody just doesn't have the resources or the time or the money to do that, we should find ways to step up to help and get that done, if that's the case. But I think it's, it's a more worthy effort to try to reduce the fuel right up against housing areas. And then on the second part, I guess, number three on the recommendations, is this for us to look at our own, our own selves and say, oh, okay, so about in the rideaways, in the parks, in our own open, you know, we've got the multiple species conservation program, where we let a lot of land go back native and natural. Well, is that the best thing to do, depending on where they are? You know, maybe we should do some clearing, or maybe we should have some access or things like that. So 17 is more of a strategy of brush clearing to come back with options for us, and I think this is, you know, this is the best prevention we could have. Just backing up, I'm kind of going all over the place here. But, you know, the cost of the money, the cost of these helicopters is outrageous. It's like 18 million bucks, I guess, for a helicopter. So not only have to buy the base helicopter, you got to put all this firefighting equipment and hoses and make sure you've got all this capacity, but even if it's 20 million bucks, the billions that it cost LA, or the billions that it cost in these fires and the amount of, you know, so I know this is a lot of money, but if we can spend millions to save billions, I think that's a better effort. So I'd appreciate, you know, my colleague's support on this, and if we could do the helicopter with the caveat that goes to San Diego County Fire, and approve items 16 and 17. I'll make a motion to approve both with the, with the San Diego County Fire amendment, my own amendment myself.
Can you clarify that amendment, please?
Sure. I want to make, I want to make, well, the purchase of the twin-engine helicopter is for San Diego County Fire for 24/7 firefighting.
Okay, great. I will pass myself and call on Supervisor Montgomery-Step. Go ahead. I'll call myself after.
Okay, all right. If, I don't know if you're planning on seconding.
Go ahead.
I'll second, I'm fully supportive of this item, but I do want to, I just have a question really quick, and this is for Supervisor Desmond, about, you mentioned briefly kind of the, the SEIU request around retroactive and moving forward, just leave for, for employees who are impacted by the fires. And so I wanted to know if it was possible to include any kind of language into what you're doing now for exploration of that, or is that, oh, move me to county council, if that's okay? Ms. Sylvan can answer the question?
I have time, I lost the time.
No, it's okay. It's just the supervisor mentioned general support, right, of SEIU, the request we heard today around including leave retroactively and moving forward for employees that are impacted by the fires. Is that something that we could add to the, to the motion today, explore that?
Not today in open session, because it's not agenda sufficiently broad to include employment-related actions?
Okay. Okay. So that, based on that, so then I understand your comment then, that I also just want to say publicly, interested in exploring that in the very near future, especially because folks are being impacted right now. Okay. All right. And with that, the only other thing that I, that I want to mention is that, just kind of stressing the importance of having the helicopter units, but also the ones that we have, making sure that they can operate fully. And I know, I had asked a question about that, I know that's in the sheriff's custody, and I totally understand that. I'm still not quite clear on how a maintenance issue would impact only a certain time of day, but at the end of it all, like we're, you know, we certainly don't want to look back and say that we had a unit that, you know, could have been operable but was not. I know, I think we're all on the same page about doing absolutely everything that we can, and so I just want to put that out there, even if it's for future conversations. We need what we have and what we're paying for, we need it to be operable at all times. So, but with that, I'll second this motion, and thank you again, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. So I just had a couple comments on both items. I think the first comment I had, just starting with item 17, is regarding the brush management and defensible space programs. I know we have robust programs. My understanding is that we already even have funding for some of these programs, but they were held up because it was going to increase property values if we help people basically improve the value of their homes, and then they were going to have to pay higher property taxes, so my understanding, Chief Meacham, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys have done a lot of work over the last year, you fixed that tax problem, and now your, your program's in a better shape. Is this right?
Yeah. Vice Chair Lawson Reimer, that is correct. We received a home hardening grant through CAL OES and the federal government, and early on, we realized that the improvements that we were doing through the grant was going to become taxable for the property. So last year, we did work through the state legislature to get that changed now, so any type of home hardening we do does not cause the property to be reassessed and put a tax liability on some of our most vulnerable, or most vulnerable residents that we were trying to help in the first place.
Great, that's great. So I just would say, I'm just going to kind of uplift, there's a lot in both of these board letters, I just want to uplift the pieces that I found kind of particularly compelling. I do think it'd be helpful, when you come back in 120 days, is there anything else that we could be doing or should be doing as a county to ensure that homeowners are taking advantage of these programs to the greatest extent possible, and that we're really, because so much of the property that we're talking about is private property, and we need to kind of create the incentives and supports for folks to do the fire hardening and engage in brush clearance. So I really appreciate that part of the item 17, and hope to, that's kind of a big part of what you come back with in 120 days. So I just want to identify that around the private property piece. And then I do just want to echo, can I think my colleagues, it sounds like we're all on the same page, that if we need to fight fires at night, I don't think fires go to bed, so it sounds like it would be really important that our fires, our helicopters can fly at night. So firmly in support of the amendment that would ensure that our firefighters, our helicopters can fly at night, that feels imperative if we're going to get another fire, another helicopter, it should definitely be flying at night to fight fires at that time. I do have to say, I'm still confused why this helicopter's been out for eight months. I know this is not a question we can answer today, but perhaps we can have some follow-up, maybe report back some kind of memo or something, not come back to the board, but something like a note to the board members as to why these fire, these helicopters have been down. I don't know if that is possible.
Should have had a warrant.
You know? Okay. So those are two of my big comments, and then just a couple other things I wanted to uplift, is definitely very interested in just the water report back. You know, my understanding is that our water supply system and our hydrants are in really good shape, but we should absolutely verify and double-check and make sure that we're not going to be in a situation of running out of water. So very interested in that report. And then finally, and I think this is way outside the bailiwick or the expertise of anyone we have, you know, in our county staff, but I agree, this insurance issue is major, and it's huge, and we know it's going to impact so many homeowners, and it's not, it's going to ripple beyond just people who are impacted by the fire. It's ultimately potentially going to impact our entire housing market in California. And so I think if we can just better understand, you know, what the status is and what the prognosis is, that, this is already in your motion, but just uplifting that this is a question that I have as well. So those are my, those are my comments, and I think Joel Anderson had his hand up, and then I'll go to Supervisor Desmond.
Forget what I was going to say. I had something else to say, but I forgot. However...
Because I said them all.
The Cedar Fire, what we learned, because I was on the Pottery Dam Water District Board, what we learned was, in the older communities, many of the communities started with a three-inch pipe, then later they added on to a five-inch, then maybe they went back to a three-inch, and so some of the fire hydrants while there didn't have the capacity to actually pump, because these were all added into a community after it had already been developed. During the rebuild, we standardized all of it, but then the flip side was, you have three homes with a fire hydrant, and that water gets stale, so they have to have chlorine injectors, and everyone thinks they're drinking pool water. So there's, this, this unwinds quickly as much more difficult. So when we invite County Water Authority in to perhaps address it, I wonder if they, through all the districts, are looking. I can only speak to the district I served on, I don't know about the rest, but I would imagine in the city of San Diego and some of the other places where you have older communities, they may not have been upgraded. When we add all the ADUs, we add all the additional people, that their pipes weren't necessarily designed to that level. So there might be some opportunities where those backfills need to be included in their capital improvement projects. Thank you for bringing that up.
Ebony, did you have a question? Clarifying question?
Yes, if I can just clarify with the team, the grant funds that we have been awarded for the purchase of the helicopter, are those funds that can be used by County Fire, or were they awarded to the sheriff?
They are funds that can be used by County Fire.
Thank you.
Yep. Would, I guess, to follow up on that, would they be buying it, or we're buying it?
County Fire, I'm sorry, County Fire would be purchasing, so the county of San Diego would be purchasing the aircraft.
Oh, we are County Fire. I'm sorry, I'm thinking CAL Fire. There's too many, okay, little fifhtums around it, anyway.
Okay, Supervisor Desmond, do you have some additional comments?
Well, I guess, just as a follow-up to what you were talking about earlier, as we brought up insurance, and I mentioned the Insurance Commissioner's office, you know, I don't know, who else might be experts on this? Maybe they're, not that I'm trying to have competing or debates or things like that, but I don't know, if you can get State Farm or Allstate, or I don't know, somebody else to, you know, you can add more people onto this list of experts that I had given, those are just examples, but it'd be nice to kind of just, for us to get a grasp, because a lot of people are calling us and saying, hey, my insurance got canceled. So how do we, you know, I just, I'm trying to get a better understanding of how and why, and I think that'd be good for the board as well. Thanks.
I remembered, if you don't mind, we just did a deal on tariffs, but we saw that the White House put a block on grants, and there's always been a big wall between federal monies being spent by the county and other monies being spent. I just want to make sure that as we move forward, you talked about a federal grant, I just want to make sure that those grants are still in place and still applicable, because they may not be. Yeah, and we're making all these plans, and one of the things that we might want to consider is, we still need it. So if we don't have those grants, where do we get that money from, and how do we backfill? To me, this issue's much more pressing than what's going to happen with tariffs. This impacts our constituents right now, in, to Monica's point. Thank you.
Supervisor Anderson, is that a suggestion of what to be included when the county team comes back in 120 days?
I think having a backup plan would be great. I just don't want to delay this, it may take more than 120 days. Maybe whatever works best, but I don't want to delay what we're trying to accomplish, but perhaps as a tier two, if it takes 160 or 180 days for an alternate plan, I'm good with that, too. So it's at the motion maker's decision. I'm good, I'm ready to go yes.
Okay. Great. Yes, Claudia, did you? Okay.
If I may, just through the vice chair, clarify that for item number 16, recommendation to, does provide a sufficient authorization to do exactly as you're describing, to the extent that the grant funds are not available, the remaining balance would be referred to budget. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much. We have a motion by Supervisor Desmond, a second by Supervisor Montgomery-Step. Please vote.
Vice Chair Lawson Reimer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to item number 19. So I will turn it over to my colleague, would you like to introduce it first, before we go into public comment?
Yes. Yes, I'll say a few words before we go to public comment. Thank you so much, Vice Chair. I am thrilled to present this item today, which seeks to enhance the accessibility and the quality of behavioral health services across all levels of need in San Diego County. If passed, this item will also present future opportunities to enhance workforce development for the regional behavioral health system. In our, in my previous efforts to expand accessibility to behavioral health services, the focus was more centered on acute psychiatric care beds. This level of care involves providing more intensive care to patients who are staying in a hospital. The item I'm bringing forward today presents a much broader vision. Not only does this item include the establishment of up to 30 beds for intensive acute care services at Paradise Valley Hospital, but it also seeks to expand services at the outpatient level, allowing patients to get the care they need while living at home, and at the long-term care level, including board and care, in addition to more substance use disorder treatment services. These actions will allow us to more comprehensively enhance our continuum of care and optimize our regional behavioral health system. As we continue this work, I think it's important that we shift the conversation away from overly simplistic views of behavioral health and the relationship between homelessness and behavioral health. I have said this again and again, but it bears repeating, homelessness is an economic issue. It is primarily driven by a lack of affordable housing. And while it is true that individuals suffering from a behavioral health disorder are more vulnerable to losing their housing, the fact that our region has such a significant shortage of affordable housing is what results in most individuals experiencing homelessness. With that said, we have to keep pushing forward at the county to optimize our behavioral health systems. It is our duty to the public to ensure that we have services available when and where our residents need them. The work we're taking on must continue to be very intentional, targeted, and outcome-focused. We cannot approach the establishment of additional behavioral health beds and treatment slots with the goal of simply creating places to put people. This won't address the broader issue. We need to think more, think and act more holistically. We must prioritize accessibility and quality in these decisions, and it is absolutely critical that we are deliberate about how we build out our behavioral health continuum of care so that we meet the individual needs of every resident receiving care. There is no one-size-fits-all approach, that will only result in a system that is ineffective and inefficient. And with so many of our neighbors struggling, we owe it to them to do this work the right way. A significant focus of this item is on increasing community-based care in both quality and capacity. The establishment of more long-term residential care beds and increasing treatment slots at outpatient, outpatient programs, such as partial hospitalization programs and intensive outpatient programs, will help address one of the primary issues facing our continuum of care, and that is the bottlenecks at the inpatient care level. Most, many hospitalized patients are ready to be to be discharged, but the problem is that there's nowhere appropriate for them to go for ongoing care. These delayed discharges can be very harmful to patients and ultimately lead to the regression of patient health status. Beds being occupied longer than needed that could be used by other patients, and increased costs in our regional healthcare systems. We can address this challenge and better serve countless patients through enhancements to our community-based care networks. Also want to take a moment to highlight the potential this item presents to bolster our behavioral health workforce. I want to remind everyone that a 2022 San Diego Workforce Partnership Report found that the San Diego region needs to educate, train, and employ, and retain over 18,000 behavioral health professionals by 2027. That's only two years away now. And we have to do this to meet the projected demands for services. The expansion of new services through this item today will present ample opportunities for regional academic institutions and healthcare providers to establish new clinical training programs. These new training programs will allow San Diego residents to pursue rewarding careers in behavioral health, including psychiatry, clinical psychology, nursing, social work, pharmacy, healthcare administration, and various other professions. In turn, this will result in an influx of high-quality behavioral health providers and staff throughout San Diego County, elevating the quality of care across the region. And in closing, I want to reemphasize my commitment to optimizing the county's functions as a behavioral health and public health entity. We must continue to lead in these efforts. And while we have a lot to be proud of in terms of the capacity that we have built so far, a lot of work remains to be done, and I'm looking forward to partnering with my colleagues on the board, county leadership and staff, as well as the many hospitals, healthcare providers, and community-based organizations involved in this vital work. I truly believe that together that we can build a regional behavioral health system that prioritizes access, quality, and stability, a system that serves all residents at their specific level of need. Thank you. I will just go ahead and move the item now before a public comment, but I'll turn it back over to you, Vice Chair. Thank you for the opportunity.
I'm happy to make a second, and if we can go to public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reimer. We have 14 requests to speak on this item, five in person and nine requesting to speak by phone. Also note that we received three e-commerce, one in favor, one in opposition, and one neutral. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 19 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers, starting with the two individuals in favor, followed by those in opposition. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. I'd like to invite forward Josh Mohannon, Dion Akers, and be followed by the first speaker in opposition, Alan C. You'll have two minutes to address the board, unless you could please begin by stating your name for the audio record.
Hi, Josh Mohannon with Father Joe's Villages. And first Supervisor, I want to reiterate, homelessness is an economic issue. That is the driving factor that results in a lot of our neighbors experiencing homelessness. But I'm here to speak on the behavioral health side of addressing homelessness. And so what we know is the longer somebody's unhoused, the more likely they are to develop some kind of behavioral health issue. And Father Joe's, we have 500 employees. We do outreach. We have street health vans. We do case management, federally qualified health center, substance use disorder treatment, residential treatment, permanent supportive housing. And what we know based on our expertise and experience out here in the field is that, you know, people are ready for treatment and care, but along in the continuum, and we do touch, you know, nearly every part of the continuum in our work, from beginning to outreach to the end to housing, is that there are just not enough services to go around. And as a county, we've done a great job really to augment these things and have these important discussions, doing the analysis of what services are missing, what kind of beds do we need, whether it be acute or boarding care. And so we have the data. We know that there is, there is a gap in services that are available. But, you know, really what I implore to all of you is to continue the prioritization of this work, continue to invest in this space, and recognize that it's the entire spectrum that has to be addressed. You know, we see it day in and day out as we move people within our organization, but we just need more outpatient. We need more acute beds. We need more boarding care. If we're ever going to really address the issue to help people exit homelessness who may have fallen into it for economic reasons, but may have developed a behavioral health crises as a result of being unhoused. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Supervisors, Staff, and Ms. Shelton. My name is Dion Akers, here on behalf of San Diego Mayor Todd Gloria to speak in support of item 19 today. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. There are countless contributing factors that lead to homelessness and a myriad of co-occurring conditions that make recovery and stabilization challenging for individuals living on the streets. However, we recognize that few circumstances are as dire or as challenging to address as individuals suffering from severe psychiatric illness. In the state, we need nearly 2,000 acute-level beds to treat patients who are suffering from behavioral health ailments. And in the region, we need nearly 400 more boarding care beds to provide long-term stability and support. Not being able to provide the right care at the right time to individuals in need of specialized acute behavioral health treatment not only impacts the care for the resident, it also contributes to long wait times in our emergency departments, puts undue strain on our first responders, and amplifies the bottleneck in delivering proper services throughout the continuum of care. Addressing the shortfall of treatment beds requires urgent, dynamic, and collaborative action from across the region. We must build new facilities, explore new solutions, reimagine outdated service models, ask difficult questions of our colleagues and of ourselves, and expand current partnerships to maximize our ability to provide the much-needed treatment here in San Diego. With that, I am proud to offer the city of San Diego support for today's action to build on the county's existing relationship with Paradise Valley Hospital, which could lead to the establishment of 25 to 30 new psychiatric inpatient service beds in our region, in addition to the other benefits that were mentioned. While today's action represents just a small portion of our need for new beds and is slated to come online at a facility outside of the city of San Diego, Mayor Gloria knows that adding any new treatment beds throughout the region will improve the status quo in San Diego. And we will stand before you proudly and publicly supporting any effort to increase services and treatment beds for San Diegans living on the streets and suffering from severe mental illness. Thank you for bringing this item forward. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I urge you.
Here is the next speaker. Is coming forward to call the remaining speakers in person, allegedly Audra and Mark. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Hello, Alan C. Mine's actually a green slip for this one, because I support anything you do to get the drug tents out of the street. You pointed out mental illness, but that actually is more offensive. Go down to commercial in National, right here as I drove in this morning. There's a whole fleet of tents out there, and a guy standing in the street yelling. I had to stop and wait for him to get out of the way so I can get to this meeting in time, yelling at the top of his lungs. That's not mental illness. That's drugs. Personal standpoint, Chula Vista, I pointed about that in Humane Services down by Harbor Side School. Before Chula Vista finally fenced off that area, we had a whole line of drug tents, prostitution, everything going on next to Harbor Side Elementary. Until you tackle the problem upfront, call it what it is, and make results, just like I pointed out, the 550-bed shelter, Golden Plaza, could have actually made a difference, could have made a difference had you did what you're starting to do now, behavioral health. You point out Paradise Hospital down in my city, this north of me, National City. You know what's right next to it? A closed-up sanitarium, closed-off building that used to be what you're doing now. So are we going to do the DMV route again and put people away and lock them up and not actually treat them? Look at the history of that sanitarium next to, in National City, next to Paradise Hospital that you mentioned. Let's give these people real treatment and stop pilling around calling it, oh, financial. No. Okay, for the people who are financial, where are they moving out to? Next to the drug tents. So what happens? You get more people drugged up. Attack the problem. It's not offensive. Call it what it is, because that's how you're going to fix it. Our neighbors are a stake. Harvest Elementary got saved, but how many other schools, homes? And when they put the camping ban, that only applies to government building? What about our communities, our stores, our neighborhoods? What about them? When you put a camping ban, it must apply to every resident, every store, every business.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark, you're only treating the symptom. You're not, you're not stopping it at the source, Monica. You're right about housing. However, what is causing a lack of housing? These housing programs that the county is coming up with are way too expensive. They've got people making money. Some of them have shareholders. It's absurd how much money the cities, the county spends to build these places and have, you know, psychiatrists and psychologists and counselors, mostly that the people don't want or use. In fact, they probably fear speaking to them. The real problem is what I've stated before, and not just with mental health and homelessness, but in general, every problem in our society. Real, actual slavery because of the Federal Reserve banking system that causes inflation intentionally, period. Now, if you're a CEO getting, getting paid for a program, getting $50 million that year, you're not going to notice inflation or care. But for the average person, it's unbelievable. And also, there's a video everyone needs to see. I can't remember the exact title. Forgive me. I usually have it with me. It's on YouTube, something like Zeitgeist Addendum 2018 Peter Joseph Documentary. That should bring it up. Everyone should see it from six minutes and 40 seconds to 24 minutes. That would teach a fourth or fifth grader how corrupt the banking system is and what's going on. And then on top of that, you need to see another video, only six minutes long. It's called Wealth Inequality in America. And to make a long story short, we are just dismally, like unbelievably, the lower half of the population isn't even on the graph. It's like a line at the bottom. It's a travesty. It shouldn't be. That's your cause, and it needs to be fixed.
Thank you. Final call for allegedly Audra. Not seeing any movement in the chamber. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. We will start with our first caller.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Megan Stewart, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and thank you for your commitment to addressing behavioral health services in our county. The agenda item addresses the need for expanding and enhancing behavioral health services in San Diego County due to a mental health crisis and the shortage of critical care beds. The expansion of mental health services, including inpatient care, intensive outpatient programs, and long-term residential care is critical for those struggling with mental health and substance use disorders. However, we cannot ignore that marijuana use, which is now widely commercialized in California, is contributing to a surge in mental health challenges and substance use issues. Studies have shown that marijuana use, particularly among young people and vulnerable populations, can create or worsen mental health conditions, leading to higher rates of anxiety, depression, and psychosis. As we work to increase access to care for medical beneficiaries and vulnerable individuals, we must recognize that the marijuana, tobacco, and alcohol industries are part of the problem. Commercialization of marijuana specifically has led to an increase in use and with it, a greater demand for treatment. While expanding services is essential, we must also consider how the commercialization of marijuana affects the very people that we are aiming to help. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Good afternoon. This is Peggy Walker. As a youth health advocate, I thank you Supervisor Montgomery Stapp for calling attention to urgent need to enhance the behavioral health continuum for mental health and substance use treatment. This need is a harsh reminder of the importance of substance use prevention and early intervention as an adjunct to treatment, of how often we wait too long to take preventive action and the toilet takes. Studies by the Mental Health of America Organization show half of those who develop no health disorders display symptoms by age 14. Despite this knowledge, we continue to fail children by ignoring problems until they reach crisis level. Instead of investing in substance use prevention intervention, we see unconscionable rates of school dropout, involvement in the juvenile justice system, and eventually homelessness. Monitoring the future national survey results show a 30% marijuana use rate for high school seniors and a 40-year record high, 43% use rate for those age 19 to 30, a time when significant life decisions are made. The National Institute for Drug Abuse states, "The prevention strategies can reduce drug use initiation, but that prevention efforts are fragmented." Data demonstrates why this fragmentation must be addressed. A 600% plus increase in county marijuana-related ER admissions, for example, shows need. So I ask you, please ensure that this behavioral health continuum includes a substantial substance use prevention component with prevention professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Consolo. So yeah, let's continue treating the symptoms. They will never get to the root of the problem. Why? There aren't countless reasons. There's only one reason. And that reason is government and their junk system that we, the tax cattle and indentured servants, continue paying for. This reckless, sloppy, abusive, and beyond corrupt system, this government continues dropping the ball. Again, society is collapsing, and the people are starting to recognize that the reason they feel like they're mentally ill is that they're living in a system that's not designed to suit the human spirit. The system was never designed for you to win. When will you get that? It's time to break all their rules and carve your own paths for the betterment of all of humanity, not just a handful of psychopaths running the show at the moment. You have to understand, most people, I get it, most people aren't ready to unplug from the system. I mean, it's like Stockholm Syndrome to the max. And so many people are hopelessly dependent on this system, same system that enslaved them, and they will fight to protect it. It's, again, Stockholm Syndrome. To the indoctrinated puppet pawns on the dais, reminder, the system was never broken. It was built this way. You get it. You guys are smart enough to look into it. You already know. Some of you do know, and you're just going along with it. Shame on you. But that's okay. There's something that's called karma, and everybody who doesn't, you know, who just goes along with the bad, I mean, you know, they will, in fact, get their due karma. And that's just what so. Laws of nature. Everybody has to abide by law, right? Yep, they do. You do.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Hi, Paula Bold. Let me guess, HHS has old continuum failed, so they need a new one. Hopefully more inclusive of the entire county, as we have suggested, but this is no change. Old language, new clothes. The board letter mentions that the county needs about 400 beds, but then the only hospital mentioned is in recommendation two, which is direct the chief admin officer to enter into discussions with prime healthcare to expand the number of behavioral health, psychiatric, acute, inpatient beds available to people who are medical eligible within Paradise Valley Hospital. So cram 400 beds here, all in National City. But more concerning is they're restricting them to medical eligible, and the problem is all over the county. You need a single plan to take care of the whole county, east to west, north to south. I don't think we should have all these people who are mentally incompetent driving all into National City. Not fair.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Gambler here. You know, for 12 years, I've been fighting you guys on the security of our election. I went through major depression, wished I was dead for many years, and all I wanted from you guys was a conversation. I was told I could not have that conversation because the county decided to... I was told I could not have that conversation because the county decided to put me on the books to prevent me from asking questions.
Could you pause this time for a moment, please? Just a reminder that it's important to speak to the agenda item, so please make sure that your comments pertain to Agenda Item 19. Thank you. You can go ahead and restart this time.
Mental health, right? You guys directly affected my mental health. I needed assistance, and you guys chose to ignore me for years, years and years and years. So please, can you please explain to me how this is not related? How you guys lying to me for multiple years did not cause me to think and not trust anyone? To blow up on people for no fucking reason whatsoever? Your actions did not cause all that shit to happen? And all I ask is for a conversation, just a conversation. But you're too damn fucking scared to have a conversation regarding election fraud because your superiors want to go ahead and commit election fraud. Your superiors should have been the people, not these organizations like BlackRock, Vanguard, these church organizations that tell you how to spend our money. It should be coming from the people. And what part of that do you not understand? I pray to God that Trump is honest when it comes to the elections, because most likely you guys are going to get thrown in jail for what you did to me. And that is what I-
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. I just want to comment and support. I appreciate my colleague bringing this forward. I think we're all full court pressed to try to expand out our behavioral health capacity in San Diego County. I think this is very promising, you know, because we already have an operating relationship. I'm hopeful that these negotiations will be more fruitful than our last round. So, you know, good work. Keep it up. Let's try again. Thank you very much to the team, and happy to support this today. Does anyone else have a comment? If not, Andrew, do you have an additional comment?
This is really quick, Vice Chair. I do want to say thank you to county staff for all of the negotiations that have ensued over the past eight, nine months. You all really were creative about trying to come to the table and doing things I think that we just haven't done before, and so I just want to say thank you for that. And I'm confident, you know, this is long-term. Like, our partners have been here for almost a century, and we've been here for longer than that, right? And so I think, you know, things will come back around, but we're doing what we can right now to move the ball forward. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Okay, with that, we have a motion by Supervisor Montgomery-Steph. I made a second. Andrew, please call the vote.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We're going to be moving Items 20 and 21 till tomorrow, so we will move forward now with board committee reports, and this is an opportunity for any of our board members who are on any boards that are not this board to report back on whatever is happening at your board that might be of relevance to this board. So does anyone have anything to share?
Nope, just got a LaFgo meeting coming up on Monday.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Anything from Supervisor Anderson, Supervisor Montgomery-Steph? No. Okay, great. Then we will be resuming non-agenda public comment. Andrew, please call the speakers.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 11 remaining requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, four in person, and seven requesting to speak by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. I'd like to invite forward Michael Brando, allegedly Audra, Hillary Ward, and Mark. If I've called your name, please come forward. Not seeing any movement in the chamber. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone, and we will start with our first caller.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Terri Anne Skelly. I'm a parent, a public health educator, and a county planning group attendee. Recently, Dr. Renette Lev, a San Diego County emergency room and addiction medicine specialist, provided a presentation entitled, and I quote, "It's just pot, what's the problem?" end quote. This presentation was appropriate for teens, their parents, public health educators, and legislators that care about the young people of their county. You can, it can be seen on YouTube if you like. She begins by explaining that as an emergency room doctor in San Diego, she was gravely, personally and professionally dismayed that there were 690% of the emergency room patients this time were there with a diagnosis associated with marijuana. This equates to 37 cases every day on average at the county's hospitals. Imagine the cost to parents, their families, employers, and to the medical staff, perhaps even to the police department. 17% of all adults smoking pot are clinically diagnosed with cannabis syndrome disorder. Among daily users, it rises to 50%. And Dr. Lev described the misery of cannabis withdrawal, including sweating, tremors, sleeplessness, severe agitation, and depression. And why do I mention this today? This board of supervisors and others are looking at how to better serve our young adults, and how a good place to start is to eliminate more marijuana businesses in the back country. We don't want any more of them there. So please, hear my concerns, and I appreciate your time this afternoon.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
This is Peggy Walker, and in light of mental health and substance abuse topics discussed today, and as a public health advocate, I came to share one of a flood of newly published research articles warning that cannabis is substantially harming youth. I urge you as policymakers to take note of current scientific studies like this one before advancing marijuana commercialization. A recently published Psychology Today article headlined "The Truth About Cannabis's Dangerous Effect on the Brave: Main Three Key Points." High THC content increases risk of addiction and psychosis in youth. Adolescents and young adults are experiencing unprecedented marijuana-induced mental health crises, including serious disruptions in their ability to function at school or work, and experienced psychotic breaks leading to hospitalization at alarming rates. And marijuana is not FDA-approved for any medical conditions, despite being touted as a medical remedy. The article noted that over the past decade, marijuana use has surged. A national survey, as I mentioned earlier, shows 30% of 12th graders and 42% of young adults reporting past year use. Psychology Today called these numbers surprising, given extensive evidence of cannabis's harmful effects on the developing brain. It concluded that it's vital to combat a cycle of harm unfolding in the cannabis industry, and that mission I suggest must fall to you as supervisors as you consider future policy. Thank you for hearing my thoughts.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes requests. All right, we have one more caller dialing in.
Can I speak on the, you're bold. Can I speak on today while I'm here? I can't make it in tomorrow. Just a quarter to nine thirty seconds.
Sorry, what was your request?
Yeah, I was wanting to speak on the order, the sewage. I can't make it in tomorrow because it's on agenda. May I ask? Thirty seconds on.
Apologies, that item's going to be heard tomorrow, but you're welcome to call in.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Did you know I was born in 1977, which makes me Year of the Snake, in particular the Fire Brand? Curiosity, just want to let you know that. Um, let's see here. Yeah, I don't think I'm in a lawsuit with you guys right now. So why are you hiding that data? Curiosity. I have no problem with you releasing all the information pertaining to me, because if you do, and you take a look at these lists, you will see the fact that I told my supervisor I wanted to look for another job, and she prevented me from taking time off, resulting in me having a three-day suspension after some stupid stunt she pulled. I mean, there's plenty of documentation in here showing the fact that you guys were trying to force me out, and when I chose not to leave voluntarily, you kicked me out in the most fucked-up way humanly possible. So when you go ahead and say I'm behavioral science and all that stuff, and you coming up with your own thing, please, you don't know what the fuck you're talking about on half of this shit. You are told what to say, and you don't do any research yourself. You need to start doing some research, because the likelihood of you getting thrown in jail after, within these four years is pretty high. You guys are doing a lot of fucked-up shit. The amount of lawsuits, cases happening is incredible. And do I need to sue you for that to happen? If I do, I will. No question, you threw me in jail for three days. I should try to throw you in jail for three years. Payback's a fucking bitch. Oh shit, I fed another fucking threat. No, that isn't a fucking threat. Fight or flight, if not a fucking threat. Revenge is a-
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes the requests for non-agenda public communication this afternoon. We'll now move on to those that requested to speak on the closed session matters, which are Item 22. There are five matters listed under Item 22. Individuals that requested to speak on the closed session matters must provide comments related to the matters listed in the closed session item. Otherwise, your comments will be considered off-topic. We have five requests to speak on Item 22, one in person, four requesting to speak by phone. For any individuals that requested to speak on Item 22, which are, again, are closed session matters by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll give the callers just a moment to dial in. Waiting for the callers. Would like to invite the in-person speaker, allegedly Audra. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, I don't see any requests to speak, any individuals that requested to speak dial into the conference line at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes closed session public comment. We now have an adjournment in memory from Supervisors Anderson and Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Desmond, if you'd like to, again.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Appreciate it. This first adjournment is for Kevin Skinner. It is with great sadness that we adjourned today's meeting to honor the memory of Kevin Skinner, a brave first responder who tragically lost his life in the line of duty. Kevin, 56, he was a 25-year veteran of the Orange County Fire Authority, where he served both as a firefighter and apparatus engineer. He passed away from cardiac arrest after searching for victims during the kitchen fire at a Laguna Niguel home on January 5th in 2025. Prior to his career as a firefighter, Kevin served in the U.S. Navy for four years. Kevin was well-liked, dedicated, and served with distinction and unwavering commitment to the community, the Orange County Fire Authority said in a news release. He was honored by a profession of firefighters and police cars and fire trucks from various cities who solemnly saluted as his convoy passed en route to the coroner's office. He is survived by his wife Lucia and their three children, Sierra, Kate, and Zack. Our deepest consolences to Kevin's loving family and to his firefighter community. May you rest in peace. I've got another one.
Okay.
Okay. This is for Joan Elaine Eberle. She is a beloved wife, mother, friend, and resident of Fallbrook, California. She passed away on November 28th, 2024. Joan, 69, was married to Martin Eberle for 33 years. They had a loving partnership and shared dedication to the community service. In her twenties, Joan embarked in a very successful career as a fashion runway and print model for four decades. Joan was very active in the Fallbrook Chamber of Commerce, always eager to volunteer her time. Her generosity and kindness were deeply appreciated, and in 2022, she was bestowed with the prestigious title of Ambassador of the Year. Not long after, Joan was honored with the title of Fallbrook's honorary mayor, and a role she proudly and graciously fulfilled from 2023 to 2024. Joan loved to travel and was also an active member in the Fallbrook Garden Club. Her friends and colleagues often remarked that she was beautiful on the inside as she was on the outside, and a testament to her kindness, elegance, and generosity. Joan is survived by her loving family, and her loss is deeply felt by all who knew her. She will forever be remembered for her grace, for her unwavering support for her community, and for her extraordinary kindness. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Anderson.
Thank you. With great sadness and heavy heart, I'd like to adjourn today's meeting in memory of Brenda Ann Van Omering, a woman who is known for her faith, dedication to her family, and her dedicated service to the community. Brenda's life was defined by her deep love for Jesus and her steadfast dedication to her family, community, and church. It was at San Diego Christian Reform Church that Brenda met her husband, David Van Omering, and began a beautiful 31-year marriage. Following her marriage to David, Brenda embraced life on the Van Omering Family Farm in Lakeside, California, where she raised her three children, Jonathan, Jordan, and Julianne. Alongside David and his parents, Brenda helped establish Oma's Pumpkin Patch, which became a cherished community tradition for many families throughout Lakeside and San Diego County. Brenda's service to the community extended far beyond the farm. She was deeply involved with her home group at Foothills Church, where she brought people together through her incredible faith, kindness, and warmth. Brenda Ann Van Omering will be deeply missed by her family, friends, and colleagues she leaves behind. Her legacy in Lakeside and San Diego County will continue to inspire future generations to follow in her footsteps in selfless service of their community. Today, we express our deepest sympathies at Brenda's passing, and by this adjournment, memorialize her for a lifetime of contributions to the community of Lakeside and San Diego County. Thank you all for allowing me to recognize a wonderful life well-lived.
Thank you very much. And at that, we will adjourn into closed session. Why don't we take a five-minute break? We'll be there at 3:15. Thanks.
The board will now recess into closed session to consider those matters listed under Item 22 on today's general legislative session agenda. If there are any reportable actions, they will be reported out during the land use legislative session at this meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, January 29th, 2025.